Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of the public hearing or may transmit the meeting through any means. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed knowledgeable in this conversation. That's for a roll call vote.
Member of the...
Members of the... Members of the present.
Members of the present.
Members need present. Free members being present, which constitutes a quorum for all but one item on our agenda. And I'll just mention that now for some of the people who may be here. Since we lack a fourth person, the public hearing that's scheduled for 151 Hancock Street, the site plan, special permit planning board case 2016-13 cannot be opened or heard. So we will put it off to our next available meeting and we'll put something on the web. First item on our agenda is a continued public hearing for 23 and 31 Bridge Street, site plan, special permit planning board case 2016-12. I have a letter addressed to the board, request for continuance, case 2016-12. As you know, this office represents the petition of Austin Properties Development, LLC, with regards to its application for site plan review approval and special permit for the construction of a new multifamily residential building at 23 and 31 Bridge Street. I am forwarding this letter as a request that the hearing on this matter be continued. Since the initial hearing on September 14, 2016, the petitioner has been working diligently to address all the comments and concerns raised by the city developers, peer review consultants, and neighbors, including the National Truck Service. Although many of the comments and concerns have been addressed, the petitioner continues to respond to concerns and is in need of additional time to fully respond to all the concerns and comments that have been raised and to make the final revisions to its planning. Therefore, the petitioner respectfully requests the planning board hearing scheduled for October 19 be continued until the planning board's meeting next, uh, meeting date in November. Thank you for your assistance. Signed by Edward J. Fleming, who is the counsel for the applicant. Out of a motion to accept a request for continuance.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, the next item is a public hearing for 31-39 Newbury Street, site plan slash special permit planning board case 2016-11. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 11, Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 19, 2016, at 7:08 PM in the first floor Boards and Commissions Room, Quincy City Hall, 1305 Hancock Street, Quincy, Massachusetts, on the application of John McCormick of Heat Treating LLC, 31 Newbury Street, Quincy, Mass., 02171, for the site plan review under Quincy zoning ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1, Site Plan Review. The applicant proposes the demolition of the existing industrial use structure and relocation of active business and the construction of a new 84-unit residential apartment building. The building will be six stories in height with a garage parking of 127 spaces for the first two levels and living space above. The applicant also proposes landscaping, drainage, and other site modifications. Property contains 51,529 plus a million square feet of land and is located at 31 to 39 Newbury Street. Subject property is located within a Business C zoning district and is shown on Assesses Plan 6169, Lot 28, Lot 6.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. For the record, my name is Christopher Harrington. I'm the attorney representing the applicant, John McCormick. Mr. McCormick is here with me this evening. He's a gentleman who is seated directly to my left. The civil engineer on this project is Bruce Eaton of Civil Environmental Consultants of Leveedie. The architect is Arthur Chu from Chu and Company here in Quincy. Traffic engineer is Jack Gillen of Gillen Associates. And our environmental remediation engineer is William Baird, who is a professional engineer and licensed site professional with WEB Engineering Associates located on the South Shore. As you stated in your opening remarks, Mr. Chairman, this project is an industrial building with an industrial use and it's located in a Business C zoning district. The lot is 51,000 square feet and with the zoning requirement of 500 square feet of land per unit, this property maxed out would be 102 units site by right under zoning. We're not attempting to build 102 units. We're looking for 84 units, which is about 20 percent less than the maximum that would be allowed by right. It's a six-story building, has 126 parking spaces, which complies with zoning. And also in Business C, like some of the office buildings that might be located nearby that are also in Business C, the maximum FAR is 3.5, meaning on this site, you could take 51,000 square feet, multiply that by 3.5, and that's the maximum size building you could have on the property, which of course would be a huge building. Our FAR is 1.91, which is only about 54 percent of the maximum that's allowed in Business C. So again, I think we're being reasonable with the size of the building as well as the number of units compared to what's allowed by Quincy zoning ordinance for this property. This property has an ongoing environmental remediation project, which has been stalled for the past several years, which is planned, which is, which will be restarted by this applicant, assuming this project moves forward. There are chemicals in the soil on the property from industrial users that's been there for many years, and the site needs to be remediated in order for the project to move forward. And we fully intend on doing that as part of this project. There was a proposal in 2012 by Web Engineering to do Phase 2 report up on this site. That report was never completed. We have a revised proposal from Web Engineering dated 2016 for this building for what needs to be done to remediate the site. I think I'd like to start with William Baird first to explain the condition of the property, what's there right now, and what he expects to do to complete the Phase 2 report and remediate the site.
Good evening. In 2012...
For the record, sir, just identify yourself.
Yes, my name is William Baird. I live at 111 Summer Street in Cituate. I'm a registered professional engineer and licensed site professional and the president of Web Engineering Associates. The, uh, when we were asked to look at this site in 2012, there were about a dozen existing monitoring wells on the site put in by previous consultants. So we were able to, um, to sample the groundwater and get results of the contamination that was present at the time. The primary contaminant is trichlorethylene. It's a very common solvent. It's used to, as a degreaser basically, to clean metallic parts. Uh, there's a little perchlorethylene located in one corner of the building, and that is the fluorinated solvent that is used by dry cleaners. These, these chlorinated solvents over time degrade naturally from microorganisms that are present in soils and groundwater. What we would intend to do is to speed up that process by adding more microbes and nutrients to, uh, to facilitate a, uh, what nature is already doing. The other thing we would do though is in some places where there's high concentrations is we would, uh, use chemical oxidation. And, uh, there are a number of ways of doing that. But a common one is to use hydrogen peroxide and low levels of iron filings and create a reaction in the soils and groundwater that essentially destroy the chlorinated solvents. We also tested the indoor air in the plant for, uh, for compliance with OSHA regulations and the plant didn't meet the OSHA criteria and also the state criteria for products containing solvents in the workplace. When this project goes forward, it will help us in many ways to facilitate the cleanup because the existing concrete floor is going to be excavated. And that gives us exposure to the soils where we can employ another technology, which is called vacuum extraction. And essentially what we do is when the new building is, we will put pipes in the ground and surround it by stone. And then as the building is being built, we will use a HDPE miner to seal off the stone before the concrete is poured. And with that, with the piping under the building, we can create a vacuum and draw the chlorinated solvents out of the soils. And also by doing that, we create a concentration gradient and the chlorinated solvents will actually come out of the groundwater also. We made a proposal, which was given to the DEP for a Phase 2 comprehensive site assessment. And, uh, we were working with the DEP to move forward when the existing business had some financial issues and we didn't go any further than creating this proposal. But the proposal was based on our knowledge of the site at the time. Basically, in a nutshell, can I answer any questions?
Can you talk to any similar projects which have gone through this type of process in this area?
Yeah, we, well, not in the Quincy area, but we've done it in Watertown, we've done it in Westwood, and I mean, this is something that we do.
Such a pretty, pretty standard. And, and I might have missed it, what is the timeframe for getting the soil to a good place?
Just off the top of my head, probably looking at about five years.
Five years. So five years before construction or?
Well, what we will do is we will use the, uh, the construction project to facilitate this. Prior to construction, we need to do more assessment, though. We need to put in more wells. We need to find out what's happening today. So we would sample the existing wells and determine what's with the levels of contamination and also the direction of groundwater. And based on that, then we decide what else we need so that we can do a good job of cleaning up the site, basically.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question?
Mr. Chairman, this, uh, the places we submitted for this project, obviously, are the existing conditions plan as well as the post-site plans. Our civil engineer had a personal matter tonight that he had to attend to and isn't able to be here with us. The existing conditions plan shows the existing building on the property. And as you can see, the building is very close to the property line along Newbury Street as well as along, along here. What our proposal for this building is, is the first two levels of the building are parking garages. One of the advantages of this project is that the setback for a building in Business C is 15 feet. It's a quarter of the height of the building. So for a 60-foot building, it's a 15-foot setback. So we're immediately going to add basically a 15-foot yard and green space around the entire building that doesn't exist today. So all of this area that's now industrial and has a concrete building on it will become landscaping and, and yard around the building. The, the first level parking garage is accessed from Denzmore Street. So when you come down Denzmore Street, uh, before the section where Denzmore turns into a very narrow 15-foot way, uh, there's an in-and-out exit, uh, entrance and exit for the first floor parking garage. On Newbury Street is also an entrance. This entrance takes you up to the second floor parking garage, enters and exits onto Newbury Street. And so the traffic that's generated by this building will be, it'll be split almost equally between Denzmore Street and Newbury so that not all of the traffic is traveling up or down, only one of the two streets.
Thank you.
We've also got, we've also have some, some outdoor parking spaces here behind the building for guest parking and a few more out front. When, uh, the people who live in the neighborhood would know that the industrial heat building is pretty much right on the property line on Denzmore Street. So when this building is built, um, not only will there be a, a small yard there, but also all the employee cars that are parked on that side of Denzmore Street along the building won't be there anymore because the residents of this building have more than enough parking inside the two levels of the parking garage for the people who live at this building. So on this section of Denzmore, where our building is, for the houses across the street, we're anticipating that all the cars that are on the other side of the street across from your homes won't be there because most of those people are employees of industrial heat. They'll be working somewhere else. And the street will be opened up and much wider, at least in this location. So this is, um, the architect's rendering of what the property would look like. And, um, one of the other improvements we've been asked to make, we've been asked to install a sidewalk on this side of, uh, Newbury Street to serve the people who live in this building so that when they block out the front door of their building, uh, they walk onto a sidewalk instead of walking directly on, onto Newbury Street. Uh, and we've also been asked and agreed to install a eight-foot water main, new water main in the street because the existing water main in the street is too small and too old to serve the fire suppression system in this building. So we're going to install a branded water line from Hancock Street all the way down to this property. I'd like to introduce Arthur Chu to talk about the building that he designed.
Counselor, before you, what's the width on Newbury?
Uh, Newbury Street is a 35-foot public way.
Thank you. Arthur Chu, my address is one building for Quincy, Mass. Because we're taking advantage of the grades, what we did is the first floor, the, uh, first floor parking, we raised up above the flood plain elevation. The building we have is, uh, six stories on Newbury, uh, six stories on, uh, Denzmore Street and five levels, five stories on Newbury Street. The parking is, uh, we have 126 spaces, 120 required. There are 54 on each level and 16 on the outside in the, uh, the exterior areas. And then each way goes in top, then two different levels, 54 spots apiece. We have 80 units, 20 units per each floor for four-floor complete floors. They're broken down to six one-bedrooms, 11 two-bedrooms, three, three-bedrooms on each floor. The unit size varies between 900, 1600 square feet each, so they're good-sized units. Almost every unit has a balcony to give each unit an exterior space. And, uh, the area per floor is 25,780 square feet. The building itself will be clad in a, um, a terra-clad material on the exterior, sort of a terra-clad material. And we plan on using, um, a fiber cement handling system on the upper part of the building. Any questions?
Forums, any questions?
I have a question, maybe not for the architect, but for Mr. Harrington.
Yes.
I just, I haven't been able to see the site in person, but I just looked on the street view and I noticed the street is really narrow and is it paved? I mean, it looks like it might be just gravel at some, at some point.
The end of it is, uh, is a dirt road. It's not paved. The, um, Newbury Street's an accepted public way for about halfway down and then it turns into a private way. And so our, um, our access point says this building will be from a public way.
Okay. So is it anticipated that that part of Newbury Street will be utilized by the residents of this building?
There's a permit that's been approved for a piece of property at the end of Newbury Street to actually build Newbury Street from the end all the way up to this point. So assuming that both projects move forward, eventually Newbury Street will be completely built and paved all the way to the end with sidewalks and detours. One of the, um, one of the other changes that our, our civil engineer is planning on making is that we've, the flood elevation in this neighborhood is 10 feet. And if you went to this property recently, you'd see that there were, you know, huge bubbles of water down the end of Newbury Street along the Driftway. We're planning on building a retaining wall that runs along the side of the property and then out around this edge and down here so that our property will always be at least elevation 10, so no part of our property will be below the flood elevation. So the yard that's around the building will be at 10 feet. So in theory, if the Napa River came over the banks, uh, the water wouldn't get higher than that retaining wall. And the first floor garage would be above 10 feet as well. Again, in theory, the garage wouldn't flood either if there ever was a, uh, a storm surge or flooding event on the Napa River.
A couple of questions. Regarding, um, so, so this location is sort of, kind of a gateway area because as you enter the city from the north, this is the area you'll see. So I'm wondering if it's possible to get a sense of that, what that would look like and not only going over the Napa River Bridge, but from the Napa, from that area, from the highway. I mean, I think it's, it's, it would be helpful to get a sense of, if it looks, I mean, I have a general idea from, from the drawings, but I think it's important for us to get a sense of, of that view because again, this is, you know, one of the, this is a key area in the city from a gateway viewpoint perspective.
To a perspective of what it would look like if you were coming over the Napa River Bridge?
Right. So there's a couple of places that where this would be very visible. I think from 93, I think, and then from, from coming over the bridge, you'll, you'll get it, you'll see it. So I'm just, we'd just like to get a sense of that. Is there, um, parking, or is there space for bicycles and?
There is a bicycle rack on each floor of the garage.
Great. And, um, back to the question about the street. So I, I go there because there's the dominoes there. And I've always thought that that was just a parking lot, that, that street. It's, it's a road. So I'm just curious, will, is that road able to sustain, you know, this, the traffic? And we had approved, as was mentioned before, the project further down the road. So just a general question about, you know, is that road wide enough? Is that road, um, built for the type of traffic that?
I'm going to introduce Jack Gillen to speak. He's our traffic engineer, but just to answer your question more directly. Many of the cars that you see parked on Newbury Street right now are parked illegally. They're half on property owners' property and half on the actual public way. Uh, because they're on sidewalks on either side of Newbury Street right now. So for example, if you look at a car that's parked against the Domino's building, about half the car is on land and along that building, about half, back half of the car is sticking up on 35 foot right away. And, um, and across the street, really the same thing. Not so much the building with the kennels, but that building is set back a little bit further with the next building. All the cars that are parked angled, parked in front of that building with their nose up against the building, those kinds of basically half on the street and half on their property. So, um, you know, depending on what conditions the city puts on us, it is, it is a public way. It's, uh, it's the city's street. So if they, uh, if they want us to install a sidewalk all the way up Newbury Street to Hancock, um, a lot of those cars that are parked at an angle will have to start parallel locking along that new sidewalk. But the good news is that all the people who work at Industrial Heat, who would also park all along that side of the road, won't be there. And there will be many more spaces that run all the way down Newbury to the people parallel locked on that side. Uh, this is, uh, Jack Gillen is our traffic engineer?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice President, I could give you the dot com, but just, very old, past president of Institute of Transportation and his, and director, Boston, I'm trying to get those. Um, I did take a quick look at this and Debbie Finnegan did put a memo together. I don't know if I had a chance to look at that or not, but she did do a quick review on it. And I'm trying to put something together to respond to that, even though I had prepared a memo a while back and looked at trips associated with the four unit. And then, uh, we're also looking at it now, and some of the memos are still changing. So, uh, the memos I figured is tonight, uh, hard and fast, it depends a bit, number of parking spaces and depends on, on how things are arranged inside the building. But it looks like this project is going to generate about 40 morning peak hour trips, roughly eight in and 31, 32 out. And that, if you, the way it's set up with the parking, one level coming out to Denzmore and the other going out to Newbury Street, it splits that in half. So you're going to have about four going into each street and you're going to have about 15 going out of each street in morning peak hours. So that's about one every four minutes. And now it's a bit rather, rather quickly. The evening peak hour, you're going to have about 37 in and 20 out. And then you divide that by two based on the physical features and you have about 19 in and 10 going out. So that's about one every three minutes. And these streets, the way they're set up, they can, uh, take that traffic and they can dissipate, provided that we, we, we take some improvements on the roadway. 35 feet is a lot of room to work with, but things have to be done. As you've been up there, I've been up there, they park perpendicular to the building on the right end, and when they're leaving, they back out into the middle of the street and it, it, it dischallenging. And as you know, with the heat treatment plant, they have trucks coming in and out of there. So I really don't know how they handle all of that, but they do. We're going to have to, um, make suggestions to the city, the suburbs, traffic ordinance, and there's probably at least, uh, would be the final line of parking in the 25-minute section. And then also give some suggestions if you were to park on one side of the street or whatever, what it would look like. And then I'd like to meet with Debbie and see which ones she's had breakfast with and maybe the walkout server. And then, you know, she asked that we draft up some ordinances that may be submitted at some point in time to the council for, for Debbie to view. I, I did notice that they will put a few open spaces underneath the ramp. That's Mass. Dogg property. And it, it, it's about three floors tall or sometimes maybe a little bit more than that. So I don't know who's parking there. I don't know if it's like a, a carpool and people are ride share or something like that in Boston. I don't know if some employees in the area. I'd like to see if we can handle on that, but obviously it would be nice if we could work with that, maybe get some space, just maybe there's, uh, a 30-minute parking of one outlet. If you want to be able to have an alternative for Domino's and the, and the, the set place, you know, is a, they also may also park in the rear. Let's take a look at all this, but that's pretty much what we have. You can actually look for site dis, well, site dis is, is not the outcome, you know, but, you know, I do have a couple of suggestions. So we'll get to that some day in the line. But those are the ones I wanted you to have a feel for. It's, it's not a huge project, especially once we're able to stop the traffic on the , the two roadways and there's physical demodulation metal and it's not like they can cut through and they can walk to T-stations if they decide to do that. That's where we are on that right now.
May I say?
So, thank you. And that's helpful. I'm, I'm curious about the impact on Main Road. So because of Hancock that they both?
Right. There is a sign there right now, there's a, there is a, a stand aside, red lettering and white background, it's called by 18 and sign, but the other, it does say no parking. So assuming that, that there was an audit, no parking. Now, what they've been doing is parking on the sidewalk. I know there's an audit, no parking on the sidewalk. I think, I'd like to work with the city and see if we can identify possible mitigation and then come down and do. and then come down and do the enforcement. If we have to see, we're working to do the enforcement, I'd like to know. But at the same time, we're trying to get some progress, and we'd like to work with the neighborhood.
And I was actually even thinking about the traffic. So that's a... During rush hours, pretty adjusted. And I just... It doesn't really make a difference, or will it have a negative, a significant negative impact on?
Well, looking at the numbers, it doesn't look that way. But you know, if you didn't ask for full traffic analysis, be able to see ratios and all of that right now. So I'll be working with the planning board and see what they'd like me to do to make you guys comfortable, I guess.
Jack, as a personal owner, I'd like to know who those people are parking there, because I went by there Friday morning about ten o'clock, and it was packed.
Brian Ryan?
Yeah.
I have a question who is. The company on the corner, I forget the name. I think the employees park there. And then some of the residents of the Napa building.
The Napa building? There'll be a guest parking as well there?
I think so.
I'll see if I can get a handle on that.
It's that other company, I think, that the employees are parking there.
I'll see if I can get a handle on that.
Number one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just... On Debbie Finnegan's memo, there's dozens of items of concern relative to the... A lot of it dealing with access and street. So I'd be interested, and it looks like there's been a lot of homework to do. And I'd be interested in just hearing.
Yeah, but if you look at most of your talks about the physical features of Newbury and the physical features of Denzmore and the site, if it doesn't get into the full operational aspects, I...
Yeah, I mean, it certainly looks like it's definitely aesthetic improvement. It would be a great improvement, but I just want to make sure I have a hard time figuring out how.
Yeah, I'll probably do a draft of a response and try to meet with the former draft before sending it in to you guys.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have...
I have one question, too. I gather, listening to Mr. Chu's presentation, alluding to flood planners. So you need a special permit from CBA. Do you need any other zoning relief from the CBA?
Mr. Chairman, you read my mind. Our next steps after the planning board are: we need a flood plan special permit from the zoning board, as well as a special permit to have residential and business seed zone. And we need an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. We're planning on going to the Conservation Commission when they meet in December. I'm confident that that will be approved for a few reasons. The most significant is that this property is a previously developed site. And so it's grandfathered in terms of the buffer zone for the Napa River and the buffer zone for the Wetlands. We're not getting any closer to the resource areas than what's already there. And with the addition of the new landscape, it's frankly, it's an improvement of what's currently there. So I don't think we're going to have any trouble getting through the Conservation Commission, because I think we meet all the requirements for the Wetlands Protection Act. Particularly where we're going to remediate the site, which will be a big factor, helping to protect the Napa River. So I think we'll meet the Conservation Commission in December and then probably the zoning board right after that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That conclude your presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. So I'd ask anyone that wishes to speak on the issue. Those that are a little bit shy, we have signatures over on the board. So I just ask you to identify yourself and call for a quote.
I'm Brian Ryan, just in up at twenty-eight Newbury Street, here on the house there. This is a big project that's going on, and I know we were talking a lot about sidewalks and stuff, and you had a lot of concerns about the width of that street. I've listened to a lot of that testimony, and I'm really going to be surprised how that turns out. But I'm not here to oppose this project. I'm here to talk about what's going to happen to us, there's three houses on that street. And once we start digging away at that foundation over there, there's going to be a lot of rats coming out of there. We're on the water there. And I already talked to some people that that's going to be the concern of you guys, too, or somebody's going to be down there keeping an eye on that. The other one is the hours of work. You know, we all live there, and you know, if they're going to be banging away down there seven days a week, then we're going to have a problem living there and renting there, because renters are there, too. So that's one of our concerns. So far, you haven't answered me anything yet, and I'll just keep going. When they put a building that size in, they're going to have to put caissons down, I believe. I'm not an expert on engineering, but they're going to have to hit the bedrock there, how to get that building to sit right. In order to do that, they're going to drive pilings down, which is going to shake our neighborhood and crack our windows and our walls and our foundations. I just heard there's going to be a sidewalk put in front of our house. We don't know that either. You know, this noise is going to be really hot on the people that live down there. That's going to be our concern. But you know, a lot of people are going to put up with it. You know, but the workers that are putting up the building, where are they going to park? Where they're putting up this building? Are they going to come down and park on Newbury Street? There's no parking down there already. You know, that street is really crowded. When that registry entries out, half of those people there come all out to Newbury Street at five o'clock, four thirty to five o'clock. And with bird electric there, you can't even get up to sleep with the trucks and stuff. And out, so if you're looking at that, I appreciate you seeing that. So I don't know where the workers are going to park while this is going on. Are they going to come down and... What are they going to deliver these, you know, big pieces of steel? Are they going to come in on Sunday afternoon or Sunday night, big trucks? You know, I don't know. If you guys could give us some contact numbers, the neighbors are sitting right here with me in all three houses. They're back there. They're asking me to go up and talk unless they want. So those are my questions right now. What's going to happen down there when all this is going on? If you have any input, or any answers you could give us, there's three families in here. Who lives on Newbury Street? Raise your hand. There you go. You know, we're going to have to put up with this, so it's only three houses.
Sir, I would just represent to you that some of your concerns are also concerns that have been raised by the health department in terms of rodents and the environmental issues. So you're not the only one. And those will have to be satisfactorily addressed to the health departments and the health commissioners' concerns. Just like the Health DPW and the other city departments. If they raise concerns, then the applicant is required to address those to the satisfaction of the departments and also the board.
Now, when this is all being torn down, right, this dust starts flying around in the air? What are we doing above for a couple of months? Because, you know, I heard there's a lot of pollutants in the air now. But I have no... You know, I just drove a train in the red line for a living, you know, like I was a union guy. I don't know about all this technical stuff. And I don't know about pollutants flying in the air, but do we have to close our windows when they're trying to do these things on the floor of that building, when they break that concrete and it starts flying around everywhere? How's that going to be... Is that going to be closed off? Or do they come over and put a plastic thing over our houses? Or what do we do there?
Let's look. I'll just represent to you that the site professional engineer on the job is going to be required to certify that, you know, if they're complying with anything, all of the regulations and/or to meet the satisfaction of the state and the city and obviously to the residents.
Yeah. What I can say will be is that if there was some contact name that we get in touch with you guys or with the city itself, you know, we're not against the development of the area, but we have concerns that if they're not being met, is there somebody we can call to and say, hey, look, we got this problem, you know, it's not being covered? Or they're parking on the street, or they're delivering stuff at nine o'clock on a Sunday morning? You know, that's what we're going to need to get in touch with, you know.
I just wanted to say, if you look at some of the prior projects that this board and the department has proved, there's always a list of conditions. And amongst those conditions are always road control and hours of construction. So I think, you know, the board and the department takes that very seriously. And obviously, you know, any large-scale construction project would require a developer to appoint somebody to work with the neighborhood, and that's also strongly encouraged, so.
All right, cool. We have a contact number which we deal with. My concern, too, is that pollution, you know, once it starts being broken up in the ground, you know, it's going to move around the area down there. There is an industrial site, it's been there a long time. A long-term effect of anything like that affecting us, or the kids in the neighborhood, we won't know that for years, just some of that stuff that comes out of there, you know. Anything else you want me to say?
We hear you.
We'll work with you.
Thank you.
Things that you're raising, issues that the board has concerns of, and obviously the city departments have already raised the issues. So they have to satisfy them.
Now, he had mentioned there was another development going on on Newbury Street down near the water, and also another building coming up Newbury Street. There's something mentioned on another site that's been okay. I hadn't even heard of that. What's going on with that?
The parcel that's all the way down the very end of Newbury, where there was a small... There's a house down there. Many years ago, there was a small private boat club that did slips down there.
That's already been approved, I'm all right with that. Is there any other?
No, that was what I was talking about.
All right, I was confused. I thought you were talking about something closer up.
That project from where the pavement ends on Newbury, in order for that landowner to build his building, he needed to improve Newbury Street all the way down, basically to his front door, because you've got to have a real road going to his building.
Yeah, the sidewalks going down.
Exactly. So his permit requires him to improve the road from where it's a dirt road all the way down to his property. So the combination of these two projects, assuming they both get built, Newbury Street should be a real street. With pavement all the way to the end and sidewalks and curbs.
Yeah, all right. Well, thank you for your help. Thank you for the rest.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? Come on up.
I've been in my office, looking at a book about air conditioning, getting the air mask no pedal. I know building up that area, that's quite excellent. But I do know that since the wilderness is, I think, fifty-eight, the pollutants are in that ground, a serious stuff. And I totally agree with the last person about the pollutants coming up when they start doing it. I know that they have an internet on it. I know the EPA is going to be involved, I assume the EPA is going to be involved. But it is a big concern to the team, the employees and anybody in that area. Who owns of the pollutants and how they're going to clean that area? And I had a message someone was going to take five years? I didn't quite understand. If you said five years, is he meaning they're going to clean it for five years? Or are they going to... They said something about five years, and are they going to be building right way on top of it? I don't... Didn't quite get that.
Sir?
I can speak to... We are required by regulation to prevent contaminated soils and dust from leaving the site. We're also required by regulations to prevent any contaminated soils from being transferred, imported on the streets from the tires of the trucks that will be calling away any contaminated soils. So in that regard, there'll be perimeter control of the site when any work is being done. And that will be part of our Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four to the DEP. What we're going to do to control airborne contamination and also transport of contaminated soils from the site.
Well, Ron, is the contamination a risk? Could you actually control a hundred percent of it beyond the side?
Well, most of it's going to stay in the ground. We're going to treat the contamination in the soil and in the groundwater where it is.
And what do you mean like five years of security risk?
Well, it takes, yeah, it takes quite a while to remediate these chemicals. They like to stay adhered to the soils. Some of them dissolve into the groundwater. And those that are in the groundwater, there's something called a plume. So the contamination goes down through the soils till it hits the groundwater. Then it gets dissolved into the groundwater, and the groundwater moves. And now it's moving to the river. So there's contamination already that's off the property, moving towards the river. And that's based on the feet per day or feet per year.
So you know which ways they're moving.
Yeah, we know where... We already know where it's moving to.
And it's not the end, though. So the five-year pledge, you're going to build it, the building's going to be there while it's starting to clean, while it's not...
Yes, actually, covering the site with brand-new concrete, underneath that concrete, we're going to put a liner, a high-density polyethylene liner. And below that liner, we're going to have stone. And in that stone, we're going to have perforated... From the perforated pipes, we are going to connect blowers, vacuum system. We take that contaminated air and we run it through granulated activated carbon so that the discharge to the air is clean. And we have to monitor that.
Yeah, it's not just weather, so they'll be testing over the next, you know, five, ten years.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And if it goes more than five years, we'll be sampling until the site is clean and meets the regulations.
So they can actually build for these regulations, as I mentioned.
Yeah, actually, a new building is to the advantage of cleaning up the site. And I say that sincerely, that is true.
Many years, a lot of people couldn't know that. They thought it was too much money to clean it for many years.
There was a previous consultant that had decided to close the site, and the DEP rejected that. And then we were hired by Industrial Heat Treatment, and we started working with the DEP. And then obviously, we were stopped when the business got into financial problems.
All right. I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you, Mr. George. Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak?
How are you doing tonight? John Rutherford, sixty-two Brownwall Road. I just want to voice my... It's not like I'm opposed to developing, but it's just way too dense. It's not the attorney's fault, it's not the developer's fault, it's our zoning code. Our zoning code lets you allow five hundred square feet per dwelling unit. This has six hundred and thirteen square feet per dwelling unit. There's a fifty-one thousand square foot building there, eighty-four units with a hundred and twenty-seven parking places, okay? It's just super dense. I mean, I'm not really sure where we're going. We're talking about lowering it to three hundred and twenty-five square feet per dwelling unit in this new zoning we're talking about. There seems to be a flaw with the zoning code that developers are using to their advantage. And it's up to the planning department to make sure things are planned well. And, you know, I'm concerned with the people that live across the street. It's going to create more flooding for other areas. And, you know, a suggestion I made to the project on Quincy Shore Drive, which you haven't even heard yet, somehow zoning already gave them a variance for the Quincy Shore Drive permit, saying that, let's say if you do give them the variance to build eighty-four units, why not build another level of parking? So why not make, you know, add another twenty-four parking? Let's add a lot of parking things. I can remember that other place on Newbury Street. They got those sort of parking things where one car parks underneath another car. They have very limited parking. And I was just looking at that picture. Those cars do have to... You're going to take away parking from those other people that are parking there, similar to pretty much like the West Street. I mean, it's just, it's... You've got to be fair to the neighbors who've been there their entire lives. I mean, let's forget about, you know, what problems there might be with the soil. I mean, that's a whole nother nutshell. I certainly would want to be in Vegas for the whole year while they were developing that and then come back the next year. That would be the safest, or you're trying to place out the different tenants. But the main thing is that, please look into the zoning code, and then let's talk about, like, is there... Are these apartments or are they condos here? Do you know what they're going to be?
They could be either.
They could be either. Is there going to be any affordable housing in these? Or are they going to be paying into the Affordable Housing Trust? I mean, we need to be building, but we need to be building things that people in Quincy can afford. That was just spoken at the meeting the other night. So I would say, you know, if you're going to let them do it, put some good conditions on there so the taxpayers of Quincy benefit, not just the developers. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Counselor?
Thank you. Yeah, unless there's any other residents in the area that have anything to say. Okay. Ian Kane, four-three, City Councilor.
Hi.
How are you?
Nice to see you.
Thank you very much, Chairman, members of the board. Who's John McForman?
You're John McForman?
Ian Kane. Yeah, nice to meet you. I've been the council for ten months here in Quincy, four-three. We didn't have the opportunity to meet yet. This is the first time I've been able to see the plans in our... This is the first time I've been able to see the plans in their totality. I got a call from Chris Harrington letting me know that this was going to be in front of the planning board. Just wondering, sort of, typical steps we take are we have a neighborhood meeting, we let the neighbors know what's going on, you know, talking about the problems in the area, what you're planning to do. So just wondering, what's the rush here? Why are we here tonight so quickly?
They're under a pretty strict deadline with the United States Bankruptcy Court in Boston to stop moving on this project and get some permits in place. That's why, that's why it was filed very early. It was actually filed before I was engaged representing.
Okay. I mean, we've heard a lot of concerns tonight. You just found out about this a couple of weeks ago. You were just engaged recently?
Yeah, a few weeks ago, yeah.
Okay, that's great. I just feel like we're rushing here. I'm not sure why we're here. It doesn't sound like we have all of our ducks in a row. So I think there are some things that need to be done to alleviate the concerns of constituents. And I'd love to have the opportunity to sit down with you myself so we can go through the project and make sure that we're taking care of all the concerns of constituents. That's all I can say tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else would like to speak? Board members? But we don't, to Counselor Kane's comments, we have not received all our comments back. So until such time in our, our... You have a review?
Correct. Mr. Chairman, the engineering firm of TEC has been engaged to review this project and provide an independent peer review report. That has not been completed yet, so that's still an outstanding item. And it was referenced to a comment from the traffic engineer. We are just, you know, this week, starting to receive the department comment letters. The applicant has not had a chance to respond to any of those at this point.
I, for one, have some concern. I'm sure the psych professional engineer can relay my fears, but I have some concern over the contamination with a residential building on top of it. And that's just me. I mean, I'd like to see some assurances. He's got more credentials than I do, but that's just a concern that I have. You don't have to address that tonight, sir. I'd just like to see some... That's a, it's just me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I just want to add, you know, I strongly encourage you to work, there's only three dwellings on the street with the neighbors and try to alleviate their as many concerns that they have as you can. I'm always surprised when I sit here and I hear a testimony that neighbors weren't consulted or, you know, neighborhood meetings haven't been taken place. So strongly encourage, you know, you to do that.
Thank you so much.
My only other comment would be for the applicant, the applicant's representative, to work with the counselor. I understand the schedule with the bankruptcy court, but that's, that schedule with the counselor is from our end and obviously from everybody here is more important. But that's, again, that's just my personal opinion. Okay, so I have a motion to continue this public hearing. To maybe date, November or December? Enough time for November or next meeting, November 9?
This one could either go to November 9 or December 14, my recommendation, because of the place that we are as far as receiving the peer review comments.
To the sentence. Okay, so the motion's been made. Is there a second to have it on, to continue it to December 14? I think that affords everybody an opportunity for it gives our consultant an opportunity to review and get comments in, also gives the applicant, the applicant's team to respond to some of the comments. Quite all is in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. The next item is a public hearing for 12R and 29 Hoover Avenue, definitive subdivision planning board case 2016 subdivision dash 01.
What Mark Reckel sent out, it should be at the very top of here, five, in your decision.
Okay, I got it.
Got it?
Yeah. That's, that's fine. That's fine. We in a holding pattern?
Looking for my engineer.
Okay, that's fine.
He got the plans.
Chris, you want us to move on to the next?
Yes, I'll help.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Sorry to take up a lot of your time. I hadn't planned this.
That's fine. We crossed through in early.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Christopher Harrington. I represent Robert Manati, who's the manager of Quincy Development Group LLC. And he's here for CEB for definitive subdivision plan approval for a four-lot subdivision of single-family homes on Hoover Avenue. Approximately one year ago, we were here before this board and presented the preliminary plan, which was approved with a number of conditions. And we're back here with the definitive plan to move forward with that project. This property is 44,900 square feet. It's currently the location of greenhouses for Amquost Florist. And on, the Amquost property was on Quincy and Braintree at one time. The Braintree side of this property was developed several years ago. It was subdivided. The Braintree side was sold to a developer and a new street with a cul-de-sac, a single-family home, were built on the Braintree side of the line. And what we're attempting to do is to do the same thing on Quincy side of the line. We're taking this entire piece of property here, which is 44,000 square feet, and breaking it up into four house lots. Just so that people on the board are aware, there are two other lots that are related but not directly related to this application. There's a parcel on the plan here that says parcel A. That parcel, there's an agreement to sell that parcel to the person who owns this house right here so he can make his yard bigger. So that parcel is an unbuiltable parcel. It's going to be transferred to a, to a butter.
Is that a Braintree resident?
This is a Braintree resident, yes. And when this greenhouse comes down, the Amquost family, this is their house here at the end of the street, when this greenhouse comes down, we're going to straighten out this property line and transfer this piece of land here to them so that their lot is square and their fence can run straight down from the back. So there's a couple of small pieces that aren't going to be part of the four homes when it's finished, but it's that piece going to Mr. Amquost and this parcel going to the butter in Braintree.
And none of those have been conveyed yet.
They haven't been conveyed yet. There wasn't a in our plan approved for that parcel that goes to the butter in Braintree, but it hasn't been...
Okay.
I believe the plan's been recorded, but the parcel has not been conveyed. So we're starting with, so once you subtract the 45,000 square feet or so that's going over to Braintree, we're left with 44,000 square feet on this parcel. It was approximately 50,000 square feet. And our plan, as we said, is to extend Hoover Ave, put a turning circle at the end, and then create four single-family house lots. So this is 12R and 29 Hoover Avenue being combined for this. Shown on the assessors' plan is lot 1, lot E1. And our proposal is right there in front of you. One, the only significant difference from this plan, from the preliminary plan that was approved approximately a year ago, is that the turning circle on this plan is bigger. It's larger than it was on the preliminary plan that was approved. And that was to accommodate the fire department's request for a larger turning circle so they could be able to turn around their vehicles. So this, what we're planning on doing, as I said, is creating four single-family house lots. And we have, we've applied for a couple of minor dimensional variances from the zoning board. We're going to be on the zoning board agenda in November, I think, November 15. One of the things that we've asked for from the zoning board is to, this, this house here, we've asked to set this house back 15 feet instead of 25. Backyard gets this house further away from the butters who are behind us on the side street. And also because the other houses are so much further up on Hoover Avenue, it just brings this house closer to the street and makes the houses line up a little bit better. So we've asked for a 15-foot front yard setback on this house and on this house. And basically, we think that's a reasonable request because the lots are oddly shaped. And that front yard setback really doesn't affect anybody except the four people that live in these four houses anyway. So no one's really impacted by this house being 15 feet back. So we've got a front yard setback variance for this house we've asked for as well as this house. And the rear yard setback variance on this house, we also asked for that. The average setback on this house is greater than 20 feet, but this corner right here is a 12, which requires a variance because it's less than 75% of what's required. The final variance that we asked for, which relates to something that we really had no control over, if you notice this plan, there's a red dotted line along this plan. And Mr. Burke will explain this. There was an error in the location of the town line between Quincy and Braintree. Apparently, it's off by two feet. So this lot here, where the house is located here, your lot has to have 85 feet of frontage and 85 feet of width. And the zoning ordinance says that the house has to be located where the lot is 85 feet wide. So there's just a dashed line right here where it runs just through the back of the house, where the lot, as it narrows, it's no longer 85 feet. And a little bit of the house is in that area where the lot's no longer 85 feet wide. So that's a, that's a variance we have to ask for for average lot width for that house.
Side yard requirement too?
Can we meet the side yard requirement?
On that one at the end of the, just one we just got to lose. Is that 13?
It is. So the lots, lot number one, which is the one at the top of the plan, complies with everything, 85 feet of frontage. It's an 8,400 square foot lot. And just the front yard setback that we talked about from the street. The second lot, which is the long lot that runs all the way back, that complies with everything. It's a 14,000 square foot lot, except that average lot width. That still complies with both side yard setbacks. In fact, the yards on that house, it's 13 on one side and 22 feet on the other. So it definitely has side setbacks. The third lot, which is the one at the bottom of the plan in the middle, that house is also going to have a 15-foot front yard setback. And we've asked, and the setback in the back of the house ranges from 13 feet to 32 feet. But because the lot line is so irregular compared to the house, we have a variance for that spot where it's 12 feet. And on the fourth lot, that lot complies with everything. That's an 8,200 square foot lot. So I think I'd like to introduce Mr. Burke to talk about how he laid out this site and stormwater management.
Chris, before you get into Mr. Burke's presentation, can you just tell us what the wave is you're requesting for, requesting under the subdivision?
We're, we have sidewalks on both sides of the street. And Jim, did you ask for grand?
47, is that radius 47?
No.
We still need, we still need a wave for the radius.
I said I want. It's larger than it was, but it's not full size.
The propeller? Or did you talk to curb?
Curb.
Curb is 35.
Is it branch?
Yes. Yeah, that was another part of the point.
We've got two sidewalks and grand curb.
So right now, the only wave you're requesting is the radius on the...
Is it asphalt sidewalk?
Yes.
It's an asphalt sidewalk.
Matching with something.
And existing sidewalks are asphalt.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good evening, Jim Burke with the Cell Burke and Associates with offices in Quincy, Mass. You have an operating, basically a landscape operation. The yellow and the gray represents pavement and roof for the current parcel. We're looking to take all these buildings down and realign the pavement edges to make it a little bit more efficient. There are a lot of things about this particular project, I think, that benefit the city. The cul-de-sac, for one, we worked with the fire department to get that size. Working before was a lot smaller than that. Another thing is the realignment store. Right now, the store does kind of a herky-jerky thing behind and has actually some history of clogging. So what we're doing is bringing the store down to here and making it a straight shot as opposed to coming around this way, the way it does it now. We're providing wide connections for anyone that actually, if they want to change their existing service to tap into the new store as well. This will remain. We're not going to take that out. What we'll do is provide an opportunity for people if they have problems with their existing store service, they can connect up to the new store and application. We're also extending the water main, eight-inch cast iron, I'm sorry, ductile iron, ending it with a hydrant. And as far as stormwater goes, each individual house will have its own cul-de-tech chambers. All of the roof runoff will be collected and recharged into the ground into these squares that we've done here. Street runoff, which actually has no control now, will be captured with a new catch basin up here, a double catch basin dislocation, and conveyed to a large cul-de-tech, underground cul-de-tech system towards the rear of the lot. There are several deep-sung frame air holes to remove suspended solids of water quality will be approved before discharge is here. That system, as it runs off, we buffer all, all stone, all stone, best for 2, 10, 25 and 100-year vents. So we meet stormwater management guidelines and all other current stormwater requirements in the city. Have any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
Board members? Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Thank you. That concludes our presentation, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. So I'd ask anyone that wishes to speak on the proposed subdivision, forward identify themselves and if the comments have been a little shy, then we have sheets over on the windows so where you can sign in in favor or opposed. Anyone wish to speak? Come on up here, sir.
Hi, my name is one of members. My name is Henry Seadham. I want to be a butter of Braintree. Probably resides over here. I just want to make sure that when you sort of put in the storm management system, that water's going to the birdies so that it comes to the butter side?
Yeah. It's a, in fact, I mean, we'll be capturing all the runoff in this one. I've seen the runoff going on right there currently. We're going to make a lot pad up because everything's going to be either captured here for the roof runoff, dragways are going to drain to the street. So this whole thing is going to be, instead of just running off uncontrolled towards, what's that, the southwest, we're going to capture it and recharge it and run.
I understand that back of that parcel there, the block on the bottom left, is the concentration of your own?
There is, I got contacted by the town of Braintree, Kelly Famon, and she informed me that potentially someone was out there. I took a peek out there yesterday. I could not find him, but I got, I have an appointment to review these plans because we'll see how, if, where the 100-foot buffer ties into that. I would expect filing an RDA with the city of Quincy would take... I would expect filing an RDA with the city of Quincy would take care of that. If we, if there is conservation land, this proposal meets those performance standards. So, it's just a matter of getting it out of burn.
Sir, just so you know what the IDA is, that's a request for, uh, whether the, whether the, whether the Wilderness Protection Act is applicable, request for determination of applicability, so.
Oh, no, no.
Just so you know what it is.
And then, when you're, uh, demolishing all these existing structures, um, do you guys have careful procedures not to damage property, such as identification?
We have, uh, a construction management plan here where we provide, you know, stone aprons and, uh, road control barriers, uh, and, you know, as far as, uh, demo permits go as well, uh, part of the demolition permits that are issued, they require us to do dust control and that kind of thing. So, uh, we'll be meeting those performance standards too. So, yes, when these buildings come down, the contractor will be required to control this, you know, construction runoff for stormwater, control this dust, control the noise, and all that.
And how will you manage the, I think my property run is looking behind the fence that I have right now?
Mm-hmm.
How will that be marked up? Is that a wall that, that will be built?
Uh, there is a proposed wall, uh, that, that'll carry the grade. So, you know, this will be, uh, we'll meet grade here and then, uh, we'll be filling up against it so you'll have, um, and link, so it's like a two-foot wall here and it's about a, let's see, one-twenty-eight, uh, a four-foot wall at its highest, this location, and then it disappears.
And then, will you be putting soil against the fence or against, just that bottom of the fence?
Uh, probably inside the fence. Probably pull it off the property line and have the fence remain.
So, you won't be, you won't be altering the fence?
No.
And so, you, you'll clearly mark that, so somebody property behind the fence is truly my property?
Yes. Yeah. There is, um, let's see, a fence, you can see it. It runs like, like right down here. So, it's, it's probably a good ten feet away where my, my wall's going to go. So, we won't be from near that.
So, in between here, will you build?
No. We're not even touching it.
You're just going to be with the gap?
Yeah. We, we can't go over there.
Okay. All right. I understand you have sort of, uh, construction schedules in which you're allowed to work and I heard that in your previous presentations and...
Pretty much standard requirements that we put on any, for...
Just mitigate the impact of the others' intervention.
Yes.
And how long is the project, how long will last the build of three, four houses?
This is, uh, Robert Matty, he's the, you know, he's a developer and also the contractor. He'll be in charge of the site.
Uh, I'm supportive of the project, obviously, the, the, so, I just want to make sure that I understand what's happening on, on the project. So, I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to ask a question. When you extend the road as you do, and I should cry notice, does it, is it, would it be public road and how far is it considered private road? Uh, it's public. It's public. So, in terms of snow, here?
Yeah, they'll have to, in the interest of public safety, I assume you have the plot of it. At the, at this stage, once it's built, unless the petition for acceptance is provided, well...
I mean, you may be responsible for snow and, and...
The city plaza, the city, the city plaza restricted.
Okay.
Public safety.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else wish us to speak? Yeah, Mike, come on up.
Hi. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak. My name is Diane Caley and I'm the abbot on property of lot one. I'm, so I'm up here.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. So, could you just provide some additional detail on the sewer that you have, the sewer line?
Sure. So, right now, the sewer comes in and comes this way and, and gone. So, is, have you seen those two existing manholes up in the backyard?
My backyard?
Yeah, they're not on your locusts.
No, because they must be on the other side of the fence.
Yeah, they're, oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, what we're going to do is basically, is a, the existing manhole here, we're going to core the bottom of that, that sore and, uh, bring the sore down, down to this location and come in directly into this existing manhole, uh, uh, I'm sorry, that's a proposed manhole. So, it's a doghouse manhole. So, you have an existing, uh, sore pipe coming this location and it turns, uh, to the north, uh, toward jump ramp. So, this manhole will intercept this flow that's coming down this way. This, this particular sore, I'm told by TPW, uh, so, uh, at least that's what the owners are telling, uh, you know, the town.
Well, there's certainly a lot of water around there because these, these properties here both have pools, which have all been cracked and stuffed over the years because of the construction of these properties.
Okay.
The change of the water, which I'm pretty sure you guys have been, you know, that my neighbors have communicated about, which is why I'm concerned about water being diverted here because, you know, they, they, are these currently used?
Well, yes. That's, this, this right here is an existing sore, right here. So, all we're doing is, this, and this is going to remain.
Yeah.
And this, they're tied into the sore now, uh, up the back. This one, this one ties up to the side. And this, I'm told at this bend that they have some problem. So, what the town, what the city requests us to do is to correct that problem, extend the sore down this way and bring it up to this location to provide, uh, the opportunity to abandon that. So, we're not bringing any additional flow in except for the four in homes, but as far as water goes, you're upgraded, you're, you're higher, you're at a higher elevation and you're coming down this way, it's like kind of like this way.
Yeah, I agree.
But, but it won't bring any, any additional, uh, stormwater or anything like that to your problem at all.
Does it all go into the line, suppose?
Yes, exactly. We're, we're going to capture it off the surface and break down here.
And can I ask, what is the size of this lot here? Because I know of the large trees there on this side that I'm concerned about their roots being cut for the property, for the construction of the property. And I just don't want to, you know, I'll be, still be responsible for the trees because they're on my land, but yet you guys are probably going to have to cut roots, which will...
Well, we certainly can, can work around that. We can change the configuration of this, say, the deepest, you know, this excavation isn't too deep either. You're only like, you know, four feet, but we can change the configuration where you can, you know, make it a line and stay away from your property line as much as possible.
That would be great. And just finally, I, I plan to survey my property because there's a little bit of question on...
You want my card?
Well, because there's a question on my fence. So, I just want to be sure that we're all on the same, you know, that we're all on the same page on where the lines are drawn.
Understood. Uh, we, you know, uh, we've surveyed this twice now, so given, uh, the way this project has gone, so we've, uh, we're pretty happy with the property lines right now.
Okay. Well, I'll just confirm.
Yeah, that's okay.
All right.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish us to speak?
Thirty-eight minutes back.
Here we go. Councilor Paul.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to be with you. Brad Croll for the record, sixty-five K Street, had the opportunity to represent the, the pencil neighborhood, obviously, the, uh, the proposed site, just to kind of give some perspective. I think, uh, turning around and laid it out in the beginning, but this has been an evolving conversation over the last couple of years, maybe a couple of years, maybe a year and a half. But anyways, we've had several neighborhood meetings, uh, leading up to this. I've, uh, sent out correspondence to the neighbors and notifying them of this meeting. Mr. Matty, uh, also engaged with the local neighborhood group just to say, you know, we're, we're trying to come back online with this and move forward. And, um, he's also, on my understanding, engaged the residents one-on-one, kind of at their doorstep and at their, we have also had subsequent, uh, conversations, right, resident and city councilor, with, uh, some of the abutters. I can tell you that, uh, from a residential perspective, this project has been very well communicated and very well vetted. Um, and I appreciate it, really, really do appreciate when neighbors take time out of their, out of their busy lives to, to come here and participate in the public process because in my mind, like, this is what it's all about. And I was laying on the table for you, I, I heard both of your concerns and if you feel, you know, that you'd rather kind of work directly with Bob to, to figure out what's what or go through me, whatever, I just want to offer, you know, that, that as your representative. So, thank you again for coming and participating. Residential A neighborhood, primarily consisting of single-family homes, looking at a proposal for, uh, for single-family homes, uh, constructed on the higher end. I mean, I think it fits well to the character of the neighborhood. I did not have an opportunity to review the peer review because I, I think I received an instant later in the day, but, uh, I'll, I'll read into that. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, what is, what is sort of the flow here this evening? Are you, is this just leaving this open? Are you moving this forward?
I, I think, given there's some information, I think the applicant needs to have an opportunity to review the peer review because it just came in today.
Okay.
And there were some issues with the health department where they need to be addressed, especially the health department, the subdivision. Key, key player on approval.
The health department. Yeah, the capacity control of the plan.
Well, even, and just by the state law, check forty-one, alludes to the approval required either by the health commission or the health department.
And obviously, they, they're going to...
They can move ahead without it, but would be their best.
But, I mean, it's, it sounded, it sounded as if they need to work through, uh, conservation land or something along those lines.
Yeah, I think that's, that's an issue that, uh, Mr. Burke alluded to.
All right.
So, but I, I don't, I, you know, I, I'm looking at the issues that were raised by the health commissioner on health department.
Okay.
I don't see them as a point of manner. And I haven't really taken a real strong, hard look at, at the peer review department.
Right. I, I, as, I haven't either, but, uh, the project honors merit as it conforms to the character of the neighborhood and knowing it's been a part of the communication process from day one. Again, I, I feel that the, uh, the, uh, the proposal is well out in front of the neighborhood. They're aware of it and me personally, speaking on behalf of the residents that I've engaged with, because I will commend an, an applicant when they go out there, go above and beyond to engage residents, because I also know that there's times when that doesn't happen and we get to the board and, you know, we get to the board and they go sideways. So, I will say that, uh, Mr. Matty and Steve did reach out, try to make this, you know, try to be a partner in the neighborhood. So, my, my thought is, as pertains to this project, I'm in favor of it. I think they're going to be, you know, high-end, it's a single-family homes and I feel like that neighborhood bears high-end, single-family homes. So, it's not as if we're introducing a, a different type of residence to an already, you know, existing neighborhood. I think we're conforming towards there. So, I just wanted to share with you, I, I think, personally, the historical, um, you know, reference is, is important. So, that's, that's my story and sticking to it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Anybody else would like to speak? Sure. Come on up.
Thanks, I'm Robert Matty. I just want to add, uh, just in regards to the, uh, the letup in health department, I've got the, uh, the services out there as well as the environmental people. They did their study today. They took their samples and then they've set traps and things of that nature. So, that was just part of the, of the, of the, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the, the major issue for the health department is that the infiltrator on the far left-hand side of the plant is on private property. So, these four homeowners will be part of a homeowners association with an annual fee and it'll be in their deed when they buy their homes that they have to pay this fee to have the catch basin inspected four times a year and have the, uh, you know, clean with the vacuum truck so that the catch basins and infiltrators work properly. So, that, that's the major issue that, um, the health department is looking for. It's going to be a deed restriction that these homeowners have to maintain that system and they will. We're going to put that in, we're going to put it in a homeowners association with an annual fee and put that right in their deed. Uh, we did receive a peer review report late this afternoon. There were some items in there, uh, Mr. Burke, to respond to. Uh, we're confident we can respond to those anyways by the time this board meets at its next meeting. We request if you're going to continue it, if we have the November date. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Is there a motion to continue with, oh, sorry, Rob?
Yep. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this, I, I think we covered it. As mentioned, the peer review report, uh, was received today. Uh, but there's one other item I, I just want the board to know, and that is, we have been contacted by the Braintree Planning Department, requesting, and they got a full plan set of this proposal, uh, that they'll review and provide comments if necessary. I, I know there's a Braintree abutter. We, we are coordinating, uh, because it is right on the property line. And, uh, I'm wondering who messed up the, the property line? Does that goes back to John Adams?
Must be Braintree.
Does Quincy get more or less land?
Moves all Quincy. I was, I was told that a surveyor was hired to mark the town line from the shipyard all the way west and it's, it's on by two feet on the entire, like...
Really?
But I, I think it's important to know that we have connected with the town of Braintree on this as well.
Did you say that should they have the plans now or they need the plans?
They have the plans.
Okay.
So, is there a, uh, motion to continue it to, uh, November ninth meeting?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we'll continue to our next meeting, which is November ninth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, the next items, a public hearing for ninety-seven Atlantic Street. Site plan, uh, special permit planning, page two oh one six, then fourteen, in accordance with the provisions, uh, national laws, chapter forty-eight, section eleven, the committee planning board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October nineteenth. At, uh, eight thirty-two, in the first floor boards and commissions room, Queen's City Hall, fifteen oh five, Hancock Street, on the application of GPS partners LLC, P O Bucks, eight one two nine six, Wellesley Hills, NAS oh two four eight one, for a site plan review, zoning ordinance, title seventeen, section nine point five point one, site plan review. The applicant proposes the demolition of the existing three-family residential structure and the construction of two duplex-style townhouses, home, excuse me, totaling four residential units with a total of eight parking spaces. The applicant also proposes landscaping, drainage, and other site modifications. Property contains ten thousand eight hundred and ninety plus or minus square feet of land and is located at ninety-seven Atlantic Street. Subject property is located within the Residence B zoning district and is shown on assessment plan six oh five oh, lot seven, lot seven. Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, uh, all for all review this evening. Uh, again, my name is Rob Fleming, uh, from Foxville, Fleming, Ray Paulson. Uh, I do represent the applicant, Mr. Greg Shea, concerning the proposal. Forgive me if I repeat, uh, some of what, uh, Chairman said this evening. Uh, the existing site at ninety-seven Atlantic Street is a ten thousand eight hundred and ninety square foot block. Uh, it's in our Residence Bay, uh, Residence B zoning district, um, currently improved by a little over forty-three hundred square foot, uh, three-family residence. Uh, this residence prior to Mr. Shea purchasing the property has sustained considerable fire damage, uh, and really not, not saved. Uh, Mr. Shea is proposing again to demolish the existing three-family residence and construct two duplex-style residences totaling, uh, four residential condominium units. Uh, Mr. Shea's background, he is a, he is a builder by trade, uh, looking at this site, uh, looking at the neighborhood, uh, speaking with Ryan Donahue and, and, again, with me this evening, I forgot to mention, I do have Ryan Donahue who's our architect, uh, Scott Henderson is a civil engineer, and Mr. Shea is there as well. Uh, so, when Mr. Shea looked at this site, you know, he, he took into consideration the neighborhood itself, uh, the lot size, um, takes a lot of pride in, in the products that he builds, uh, very, uh, particular on, um, the site layout here, uh, as well as, uh, you know, aesthetics of these, of these residences. Uh, he thought that was very important. Um, I think Ryan, uh, with the help of Scott as well, they, they achieved a great layout, uh, as well as very aesthetically pleasing residences. Uh, so again, the existing structure will be demolished, uh, and is proposing two duplex style totaling four units. Um, these buildings, and Ryan Donahue will get into a little bit further, but they are three stories in height. Um, each unit will contain one under, uh, garage, uh, parking as well as one additional space as well, so totaling of eight parking spaces, satisfying the ordinance. Um, the two levels of living area above this garage, each unit will have two bedrooms and one, one half bathroom. So, again, Mr. Shea went through a number of, uh, design layouts of the property... So, again, Mr. Shea went through a number of design layouts of the property. I know this board has seen a number of rowhouse style, to me personally, less aesthetically pleasing. He felt the, the site layout with the two buildings made a lot of sense. What it did, it allowed him to, to add a little bit of character to each property. They will be using the existing driveway for site access to all of these units. And the layout really allows Mr. Shea to maximize the landscape of the property as well. So, because he was very conscientious with how the neighborhood looks today. We, we did, as Councilor Kane had brought up earlier on another matter this evening, a neighborhood meeting was, was very important. We did have a neighborhood meeting with the assistance of Councilor Harris back in late August. There were probably 15 to 20 people that did appear for this neighborhood meeting. The only real concern that, that some of the neighbors had spoke about is the parking on Atlantic Street. I guess further up is a number of vehicles, number of people that will park their vehicles on Atlantic. We tried to convey to the neighborhood, this is, this proposal will not exacerbate that. You know, it's, this site proposal does support need parking spaces. Again, the existing driveway is relatively long, which will allow for temporary parking for any visitors that come to, to visit the site. So, we feel that won't have any issue. If the board has any questions from me now, I'm happy to answer those. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Scott Henderson, who's our civil engineer. He can go through his plans.
So, if there was any questions, Mr. Fleming?
No, okay. Thank you.
So, for the record, Scott Henderson, Henderson consulting, civil engineer of the project. Start by going briefly over the existing additions in the site. As Rob had said, it's currently approved with a three-family structure at the center of the property. On the east side of the lot, there's an existing curb-cutting driveway. To the rear of the parcel, it accesses an accessory garage on the site. It's limited landscaping. It's mostly lawn area in the front and rear of the site with two large pine trees existing on the rear west property line. It has its standard utilities for a single-family home currently for the property. Moving on to the proposed layout. As Rob had said, the development includes the construction of two buildings, two duplex buildings, four units on the property. Will be reusing the existing curb cut on the east side to access the central parking area between the two buildings. The garage spaces for each unit are at grade inside the central parking area, and we've got four exterior additional parking spaces, one for each unit, two along the, the west property line, and two stacked side by side along the east. We're proposing for utilities, for stormwater mitigation, rather, for the site. The grading on the site and the existing conditions is fairly flat. You'll see on the site plan that's provided that we're actually using a half-foot contour interval because the property is still flat, it's hard to sort of perceive how that, how it's graded. The existing site, about half of it flows toward Atlantic Street. The other half flows toward the rear and inside property lines. We're effectively maintaining that same sort of hydrology, although what we're going to do, we have three deep sub-utidic catch basins. One at the beginning of the driveway, one at the rear, and one along the west property line to capture all runoff from the driveway, treat that throughout those, the subsurface infiltration underneath the driveway. Both building roofs, downspouts from gutters will be captured and routed to subsurface infiltration as well. We comply with all state and municipal stormwater regulations applicable to the project. As far as other utilities are concerned, we're going to be cutting and capping all the existing sewer, gas, water service, servicing the property now. Running a central sewer connection up the driveway to the center of the site where each unit will have its own service to that central sewer, and then running a, a water service down the west side of the property and then off of that main line, those services for each individual unit. I did have a meeting with the town engineer yesterday to discuss the project. It was a good meeting, so we're feeling that what's currently proposed is effectively what we'll be approving. We have not received a review letter yet. We'll find details when we're expecting to receive one. Let's see, overview of the site.
Any questions, Board members? All set? Thank you. Go on, here.
Chairman, to the board, my name is Brian Donahue. I'm the principal of the project, Senator Quincy. When we were first asked by Mr. Shea to design four townhouse units with a single-car garage in, in this area, which is obviously a sensitive neighborhood in the city, we wanted to be sure that we were sensitive to the streetscape. In a lot of these four-unit, five-unit townhouse developments, you'll see, you'll see a strip of buildings going down along the site, and you're looking at garage doors, and it's something that really, scale-wise, doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. So, what we tried to make an attempt here is to make it look like you were driving by a single-family house, albeit a larger single-family house. The middle, the middle elevation shows the streetscape with the two neighbors next door. So, the perception from the street is, is a single building. It does, it does protrude a little bit higher than the neighborhood, the neighborhood's houses, but it's still under the, the maximum requirement of the city, 34, under 34 feet high. We also tried to articulate the, the elevation with the local vernacular, using appropriate materials, shingles. Actually, we've got a little brick base around the perimeter of all the buildings. So, this particular elevation shows the Atlantic Street. This shows from the neighbor to the east, and you can see the house beyond, and this is from the west. These two, this elevation would be looking at it from the parking area between, between the house. I think what would be more telling is looking at it in perspective. So, in essence, what we have are two buildings with four 1,400 square foot townhouse units, and that includes the garage space. So, living space is basically 1,200 square feet, which isn't really that large of a unit. Actually, the total square footage of this project, the two buildings, is 5,900 square feet, and the existing three-unit apartment that's on the lot now is about 4,200 square feet. So, really, actually not increasing the, the area of living space on the site. So, this, this would be approaching Atlantic, showing the two neighbors, the house, and then the, the building in the back, the other two units in the back. Aerial perspective, showing the two buildings, so you, the parking situation. One thing that I do, just try and get consideration is not staring at garage doors, so the garage doors are part of the parking courtyard. So, as you drive by, you get the perception of, of this one building. Along the, the west property line, there's a fence with a hedge, and that will be maintained to prevent, to provide a buffer from the, from the neighborhood. The, as I stated before, we're talking about basic trim materials, shingles, architectural shingles, brick and so forth. The actual footprints of the building meet, say, for the decks that we're providing off the front of each unit, calling the front is actually facing the rear. The building, the, the building itself beats the setback line in the front and back as it does in the east. The deck protrudes into, provides a little bit of outdoor living space and egress from the living space above. This is the basic landscape plan as well, to be a lot of lawn area, a couple of mature trees that are being maintained in the southwest corner, and, and as I mentioned before, the hedge along the west property line. And as Scott mentioned, we do have one car for each unit and four additional spaces for, for the units. And we also have an opportunity, I know there's always a question of guest parking, to park along this room enough, along this drive, to have a couple of guest spaces that, you know, having that covered. I don't really want to get into the details, it's a very simple floor plan with two bedrooms and a bath upstairs and an open plan living space and a, a living space above the garage. The ground level is really garage with a hallway and a camping space, and then a stair to get up to a living space. And that is basically, just glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Board members? Second. One question, Mr. Fleming. Do you have any zoning relief?
We do. We'll be appearing for the zoning board appeal as well, hoping to get on with the, the November, requesting some dimensional, dimensional relief for this. I also did file with this board waivers for peer review as well as good shadow and traffic, and those were granted. So, again, as Scott had mentioned, he did meet with the city engineer and the city engineer, he'll submit his report as well. We felt very comfortable with the proposal.
I think Mr. Duke had also reviewed the plans, and he had no comment.
Yep.
We have Mr. Duke's show.
Well, Attorney Fleming just indicated that we did grant a relief or waiver of an independent peer review. That decision was made after reaching out to the city engineer, who felt comfortable that the, the smaller scale, four units, you know, compared to a lot of the other things we see, is, he's comfortable with reviewing that for the board and providing comments. So, we did go ahead and waive peer review.
And we, that's, I think, one of the representatives in the table, I think, and we haven't got comments back, so when we get those back, we'll be ready to discuss. So, I'd be entertain a motion to continue this to our November 9th meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, we'll continue it till November 9th. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'm sorry, wait a minute. I didn't take any public comment?
Yeah.
Anybody wishes to speak? I apologize. Anybody wishes to speak on this application for 97 Atlantic Street? When you pump it identified itself, sir, I apologize.
No problem.
I've been patient to sit there all night, and I almost skipped over you.
No, I didn't want to. Hello, my name is Carl Larson. I am the bond to this property, and I need one Atlantic Street. One question I do have is water drainage. I guess that was a question that was brought up, I don't think it was brought up to you before, at the community, the neighborhood meeting. And I wanted to find out if the, what kind of drainage that was coming out of the gutters, where is it going? Is it coming into my property? Is it going into the property adjacent to you on the other side?
That's my peer review, I can answer that question. So, from each roof for the front building, those gutters will be captured and routed underground to the subsurface infiltration system, Coltech units buried underneath the ground.
Does that just go right into the sewer system then?
No, 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 it's sort of lacing the groundwater. So, thankfully, in this area, we have very sandy parent material with a good infiltration rate. So, we're able to capture that water and route it into the ground. Currently, there's no controls at all from the site. So, both buildings will have infiltration systems for the roof, one of the rear and property, or on the front. And then underneath the, the parking area here will be another infiltration system that captures all of the runoff from the entire pavement area, driveway, the four parking spaces and the parking court between the two buildings. We're capturing all of that on-site and running it underground. In the case of a unusually large storm, a very, very large storm, so something statistically unlikely in a hundred-year period, the overflow from those systems from the site will be a catch basin in the front corner of the property that will allow that overflow to enter the road, the gutter along the street, and enter that storm sewer system. So, in no case is any overflow from any system or any runoff going to be entering the gutters to either the east, west, or south.
Good, great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for being sufficient, Mr. Larson. Anybody else wishes to speak? Anyone else wishes to speak? There's last lap. Anybody that doesn't want to speak but wants to be recorded, there are sheets over on the, over in the window sill. Okay, that concludes our public hearings. We have a business meeting, a new business, the introduction to the board, the consideration of recommendations from the city council regarding zoning changes. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a business item at this point, but I felt it was appropriate to get it on this agenda because the measure was submitted to the city council this past Monday. What we have here is a proposal to adopt a new MBTA TOD overlay district, zoning district. And the genesis behind this dates back to the desire of the MBTA to start moving forward with redevelopment at its stations. Last, actually, at the end of last year, the T advertised an RFP for developers interested in developing at the North Quincy T Station. In April, the T went ahead and selected the Bezuto Atlantic Development Group out of three final bidders for that property that had proposed a, a major mixed-use residential retail redevelopment in the area of the surface parking area for the T Station. In that development is also a very large parking garage to accommodate existing uses as well as new uses. So, that approval of the Bezuto Atlantic Development Team in April triggered, well, first off, Bezuto is a company that is centered in the Washington DC metropolitan area. I was part of a team that visited our congressional delegation in Washington DC along with Planning Director Fatsis, where we got to tour some of the Bezuto properties down in Virginia and Maryland area. That followed when we made it back to Quincy over the summer, the planning director and I met with the Bezuto Atlantic Development Team to walk the site, look at existing conditions, make connections to the city departments. And from there, there was discussions of moving forward with a TOD overlay district in order to help let that development come out of the ground. What was discussed at that time was mimicking what was done in the Quincy Center zoning district. And that has, that is what's come forward now. For those of you that weren't here for that in 2005, a lot of the dimensional requirements in the zoning regulations were pulled back. However, those details were captured in a design guideline document. There was also the identification of this board, the planning board, as the special permit granting authority for any projects that were proposed in the Quincy Center district. And that's also something that's contemplated in the TOD overlay district. So, this past Monday, there was the mayor's office and solicitor's office, also supported by the planning department, and the TOD overlay zoning district was submitted to the council. That has been advertised, I believe, actually, not quite yet. That was scheduled to, for a special council meeting, which will be on November 10th. We have not received the official communication from the city council, but there is a small window here to potentially get that on for the November 9th meeting. The planning board would hold a public hearing and offer a recommendation on that zoning overlay district. So, the idea, again, is to relax some of the dimensional requirements as they pertain to the zoning, I'm sorry, dimensional requirements, and then develop a set of guidelines, which is the ability of this board to approve and adopt, to help control the development and guide your review and approval of future projects. I would say that not only the North Quincy Station, but there's development opportunities at all of the city's MBTA stations. And there is, the proposal coming forward is, is for three out of the four, North Quincy, Wallaston, as well as the Quincy Adams Station. It was decided that the Quincy Center Station is already in the Quincy Center zoning district, and a part that this board played in the spring, we expanded the Urban Renewal District to cover that station. So, we felt that that station is in the right place from a regulatory review point. So, we felt that that station is in the right place from a regulatory review point, so the three stations that will be contemplated would be the North Quincy, Wallaston, and Quincy Adams. I think in the communications from the department to the board, in the next few weeks, you will see information on that, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have at this point, but I just wanted to get that on the radar of this board, that that is coming forward.
Do we have enough time to advertise for that meeting on the night?
There is a small window, there's a 14-day advertising requirement that would put it next Wednesday. So, we hope in the next few days to be able to put together that communication. We're going to shoot for tomorrow, but we have till next Wednesday to have it advertised in the ledger, in all likelihood.
Question?
Yeah. How much authority does the city have versus the MBTA on decision-making? If you can answer that.
Decision-making as it pertains to?
Development in general, just any, you know, the general plan of whatever gets developed at the train stations.
Right. So, the Bezuto Atlantic team is, would go into a development agreement with the MBTA agency, the state agency. Whatever plans come forward, there's the ability or the requirement that it is reviewed by the city. As it would stand now, they would come in under, I'm not 100% certain, but a business C-zone requirement. So, this, this idea, similar to what we discovered with downtown and why we were getting redevelopment, would like a cleaner version, the zoning version from a regulatory, regulatory point of view, to be in place to help guide that development at the densities and the access that is required.
Okay, thanks.
So, just to kind of get my mind around this, is it thought that this redevelopment would result in potential retail there or residence, or what, or is it to make it look nicer? It just, what is, what are the types of projects that may result?
Right, well, it's wide open, similar to the Quincy Center zoning district. There's a few prohibitions on a few uses, but it is, mixed use is encouraged, residential, retail, office. The Bezuto proposal is, I think, well-known, 500 units, and I believe somewhere in the 50,000-square-foot retail range. Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Stevens, you said when you saw the projects that they've done down Virginia and DC, is that what you said? What, will they, similar to that, excuse?
Absolutely. I think all these board members were invited to the Wester Chestnut grand opening last week.
That was in the view, sorry.
You were on a ship dodging hurricanes, I understand. It's interesting, it seems like the Washington DC area might be a step ahead of the Boston region, and I think, you know, seeing some of these new buildings come forward, the DECO, as well as the Wester Chestnut, there is a competition for tenants that is developing. In fact, we're seeing some renovations of some of our older buildings. For example, the Ten Faxon has gone through a name change to the Amelia, and it's, it's interesting, there's a lot more amenities being considered in these projects now. As it pertains to the North Quincy site in particular, that is surrounded by some development and train tracks. We want the opportunity to be able to strengthen or reconnect that station back into the surrounding neighborhoods. I think a lot of the tea station developments that occurred back in the 1960s, they were really focused on cars. Get cars to the site, park them, and, you know, folks will drive in. I think the opportunity to come in with, you know, sort of the overlay district, we're allowed to look at gateways and pedestrian access and try to reconnect these stations and address some of the auto, pedestrian, you know, bicycle conflicts that do arise from it. There's also that concept of, we have surface lots, can we get that into structured parking and allow for development to occur on some of that additional way?
Do we have the ability for air rights of the Quincy Center?
The air rights legislation, I believe, is tied to the special act that expanded the red line back in the 1960s, I think it's 1967. The air rights gives the city, city council, and the mayor the opportunity to review and approve or deny any development proposal brought forward by the MBTA or its subsidiaries or development partners.
Anywhere along the line?
Anywhere along the line. That's my understanding at this point.
So, I guess that goes to my question, my original question, which was, who's, who's saying yes and who's saying no against this money, my question? It's, is Quincy proposing, you know, a mixed-use development with X, Y, and Z, and can the MBTA say, no, you can't have, you know, Y?
I would say flip those two partners. It's the T proposing X, Y, or Z.
Okay.
And the proposal for the overlay district would identify this board as the special permit granting authority. Special permit granting authority is, is the approval of development.
Okay, thank you.
So, that would put that power with the board, like this board also shares the power for the Quincy Center zoning district as well. Again, it's mimicking a strategy that we think is, works for Quincy Center, and extending that to the two, the three TO, three MBTA stations.
Great. The projects that you saw down in the DC area, were those similar metro connected to their mail system, or those are sort of just separate?
There was, yes. There was, we saw, I believe, four. In fact, we did have a printout of each one, and I think, you know, it would be appropriate to make copies and submit that to this board. They, you can kind of get a sense or, you know, addresses, so you have the ability to do, take a look at that. I'm certain two of them were at or adjacent to, directly adjacent to metro stations. Two others were more of the full mixed use, you know, where they have residences and commercial together in the same structure. So, those were the examples they chose to show us.
What about Virginia?
What's that?
What about the projects that this company has done? You said Virginia also?
I believe one's in Virginia, and two in DC, and one in, it's the whole metro area that, you know, that's, you know, depending on what side of DC you're on.
Okay.
Yep.
The other two? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, on the business, the introduction to the board, the consideration of recommendations regarding downtown development.
That's me again. All right. As this board is aware, the last item we were here on the downtown was the approval or endorsement of the Fourth Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan. I'd like to report that that was approved by the state in July, and the city has moved forward engaging engineering firms on the design of a garage and the implementing public improvements on the Hancock lot. As you recall, that was going to be the city's focus to try to unlock the development there. We've also have, continue our negotiations with two developers on two of the development parcels. Through those negotiations, roadblocks have come up as it relates to public improvements on that site. And specifically, was the stormwater conveyance infrastructure that is underneath one of the buildings, 1,500 Hancock Street, and the other is the city's desire to construct a sublevel to the proposed public parking garage that is substantially bigger than what we anticipate the above-ground garage should be. And that sublevel is budding the proposed redevelopment parcels. So, the issues that have come up are actually, actually issues that, same issues that came up during the Streetworks negotiations, in the adoption of the new Quincy Center LDA back in 2010 and 11, that required the city to file a home rule petition with the state that would grant some additional development tools as it pertains to both public and private entities participating in the construction of the new public improvements. One of the issues with, well, the ability to use those tools that were conveyed to the city in the 2011 home rule petition would solve the issues that are currently stalling the negotiations of the LDA. The trouble with the 2011 legislation is it specifically identifies Hancock Adams Associates, which was the Streetworks outfit, as the beneficiaries of that legislation. So, the city is filing a new home rule petition that has the corrective language that essentially removes Hancock Adams Associates, and then replaces that with any urban redo in place. That can benefit from the same, the Chapter 121A rules and agreements. And again, this is so the city and the private developer can work cooperatively on the implementing public improvements in the garage, you know, the foundation. It's about sequencing and coordinating the construction efforts of those items where both the private and the public needs to occur at the same time. So, this past Monday at the city council meeting, that corrective language was filed to the city council. A special council meeting will be held on November 10th, where the hope is the council will adopt that corrective language so it can be filed with the state legislature and addressed during their current session. I put that on the agenda because I think that's a very important benchmark for this group to know, because that unlocks the completion of the lane disposition agreements, which are the urban renewal agreements, and paves the way for the certificate of consistency filings of the proposed projects to this board. So, I see that as on the, on the near horizon once this issue is resolved. So, I felt it was important to update the board on that development because it was filed this past Monday. I'm sure there's going to be questions on how that relates to the downtown, and that's the update. So, any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Sure, legislative delegation.
With God's feet.
Any questions, any other questions, board? Thanks. Any other business? Hearing none. We're marching to adjourn. Adjourning at 9:08.
Can we let them know?
You know, you cock myself to death.
No, I don't want to.
Don't worry about it. You will.
I know.
And?